I'll start as soon as everybody's got a seat and they're comfortable. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Lord knows you could have been anywhere in the world, but you're here with me and I appreciate that. Candace, especially, special thanks to all of you. Alright, is everybody ready? Alright, let's start. Good evening, everyone. My name is Ajay Manjusantay Goodman and I am the host slash moderator today for Black Advancement Incorporated's Board of Education candidate forum. Before we get into the proceedings for this evening, I would like to tell you a little bit about our organization and then we'll go right to the ground rules for tonight. Black Advancement Incorporated is a nonprofit organization that seeks to combat problems within the black community through action and dialogue, this being the action portion. Before you today, we have four of our six candidates that are going for the Board of Education, which has three open slots for this election coming up. Along with the three slots that are open up, but we also have some board members here today. Please recognize the president and the vice president here in the room. Appreciate you coming out. Alright, well, anyway, today we will see what everyone has to say as far as making their statement for why they feel like they should fill one of those slots. So, let me go over the ground rules real quick and then we'll jump right into it, okay? Each candidate will be given one minute for their opening statement, followed by questions from the moderators. So, after everybody gives their opening statement, then I'll give the questions. These questions will be addressed to one candidate initially and that candidate will be decided from drawing from this hat. When you are addressed the question, you'll have two minutes in order to answer. Everybody can respond after the initial person has asked the question and they'll have one minute. If you look in the back, back there, you'll see there's a yellow flag or a red flag. Now, if you see the yellow one, that means half the time is over. So, in this first module's case, it would be, wait a minute. You look back there, you'll hold up the sign. When it's time, when your time is up, you'll hold up the red sign and that's it, okay? No more talking. Anyway, so, you know what, I apologize. Anyway, so that, for the first section, that is what's gonna happen as far as the candidates go. It's gonna be based off the moderator itself, so I'll, these are moderator-generated questions. Oh, no, oh, these are moderator-generated questions, can everybody hear me? Okay, these are moderator-generated questions and we're gonna go through and make sure everybody gets one question at least. Then after that, we're gonna switch it to the audience. Now, the audience, everyone should have, or at least have a, should be able to share a pen and a note, a little index card. On those, you can write down your answers. As we go around, as it's going on, someone will go around and collect these questions that you have. They'll be directed to me and moderator. Now, these questions will be vetted, so that you guys, everybody knows that. So, don't ask anything crazy. Don't ask anything inappropriate, stuff about people's dogs and cats. So, just, you know, just keep it on the level. Anyway, for that moment, you guys will be able to respond and you'll be given one minute. And again, halfway through, you'll be given the yellow and then at the end of your time, you'll be given the red. If for some reason we do not have enough questions to fill out the time, which is gonna be about forty minutes. The first section's gonna be thirty minutes, the last section's gonna be forty minutes. If for whatever reason we don't have enough questions from the audience, then after that, we'll go back to the moderator questions till time runs out. At the end of the section, then you guys will have your two minutes to wrap up and tell people finally why you should be one of the people in those three slots. And that's it. I think I've probably reached my time, so, oh, that's it. Yeah, that's official, that was unnecessary. Okay, then, let's go ahead and start. It's two minutes to, oh, I'm sorry, it's one minute to start.
One minute.
One minute to start. And please interject with your own questions as far as time if you want to, put out other follow-up questions. So, let's go ahead and get started. Let's see who goes first. This is so exciting. Attention, attention. The first one will go to Jamie.
That's what I asked.
Third question. How would you address issues of equity and inclusion in our schools?
I'm all this commodified, I thought we were introducing ourselves first.
Oh, shit. Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry. Introduce yourself first.
Wait a minute, my friend.
My bad, my bad, my bad. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Jamie Brennan. I am a mom of two high schoolers here in Frederick County Public Schools. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Thank you. I am a former board trustees member for Frederick Classical Charter Schools and one of their former acting treasurers. And I am CPA by profession. And I am running because I kind, I believe our schools are at a tipping point. I believe we are at a really important crossroads. Our test scores are abysmal and we're losing ground as compared to our other districts. So, I think this is time to make a change and I know that we can be better and I hope to be part of that change.
Would anyone like to respond?
No, no, no. Pick another name.
No, sorry, next person to introduce themselves.
Pick a name. See you up just now. Pick a name.
I don't think it's supposed to be that. My job is to teach kindergarten. This question is for Chad Wilson.
I think he's just gonna introduce himself.
Oh, sorry. See, go ahead, Mr. Wilson.
Hello, can everybody hear me? Yeah. My name is Chad Wilson Senior. I'm an eighteen-year veteran public school educator, thirteen years in special education. Currently, I'm a term of ed AP African-American Studies teacher. Also, I'm head football coach. I'm a parent of two children that are test score elementary. Cameron, which is my daughter, is going into kindergarten and my son Chad Junior is going into fifth grade. I'm also an advocate for students, special education, and educators to be treated as professionals as well. And I'm also happen to be a youth coach for I-9. I've been doing that for about three years, so I get a chance to hang out with my little babies out there playing flag football. So, that's a little bit about me, but I'm happy to be here and thank you for lacking, for putting this on. This is phenomenal.
Appreciate you. The next name that has been drawn is Jamie. Jamie, everyone.
Alright, can everybody hear me? Alright, thank you. So, my name is Jamie Monier. I'm a parent of two children, Cole and Connor. They're ten and seven, going into second and fourth grade. I'm a registered nurse. I was also PTA president for Newark Elementary School for two years. Where we did a lot of advocacy for our community, making sure we had safe walking streets. Walkers to school could get there safely, crossing streets or not, we had a walking school bus. I still continue to advocate for my families, that just at the elementary school, with the middle school and so forth. Helping to connect them to their teachers and to their other educators. And that's really the big piece of what I want to make sure that we do is increase that communication so that everybody knows what's going on with their child at the school and can get the resources that they need and the teachers can get the help of the parents that they need. So that they know that that information's getting there where it used to be. I thank you so much and thank you so much to Black Advancement for having us here, I really appreciate it.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. And last but not least, Josh Bokey.
Thank you, thank you, Black Advancement for hosting this. Thank you for everyone coming out this evening. My name again is Josh Bokey. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I am, my wife and I have a wonderful blended family of three teenagers, oldest of which attends, is now a junior, I have to remember this, junior at Frederick High School. And I think Spencer is getting a great education. And if you ask me why I'm running, it's because I want to help ensure that every student who attends FCPS receives a great education. That all students attend schools that are safe, that are inclusive, and that have a positive learning environment. That schools meet kids where they are at, but that we expect success and support that success for all students. That we prepare them for high academic achievement, prepare them for life after graduation. Horace Mann, the nineteenth-century public education advocate, said that education is the great equalizer. And we know that, we know that to be true. I look forward to tonight's discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh. And just to prove how fair I am, I put all the names back in the hat, so that way we can, sorry.
Answer alright.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, now, back to the first question before I so rudely interrupted. Actually, this time, now it goes to Josh. So, Josh, first question, two minutes on the clock. How would you address issues of equity and inclusiveness in our schools?
No, it's a great question and I appreciate the question. So, before you, we have to first, we have to acknowledge where we are, right? We have to acknowledge what our current, what the table is and how it is set. And what I mean by that is that when we talk about equity and equitable opportunities and equitable outcomes, we have to acknowledge, for instance, that in FCPS today, right, that there are, there are, there is an achievement gap when it comes to, for instance, outcomes in state testing, right? That differ, that if you happen to be a student of color versus, say, a white student, there is about a twenty-point difference between what those scores are. That we have to acknowledge that when we talk about issues of equity, right? That if you are a student of color, that you are underrepresented in gifted and talented programs and AP programs today. That's not pointing the finger at anyone, that's just acknowledging baseline facts. And there are whole other lots of facts that we can acknowledge and should, but we, but we need to do that. And then, from there, we have to not just acknowledge, but be transparent in that data. And we have to then say, agree on how are we going to get there and set, and set a target of how we close that. And I think, I think that when we talk about getting to equitable outcomes, we have to be very clear about what we're trying to achieve. And then we have to be transparent, and then we have to be relentless in achieving and getting there. And it's hard work and it's such a broad question and there's a number of avenues to go down. But it all comes back to, at root, that we are, that we are transparent in where we are today, that we agree around where we're going and that we are relentless and are focused to get there. And that if we're not, if we don't happen to, if what we are doing is not working, then we should acknowledge that publicly. And we reset and we pivot. Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address the question of how to address issues of equity and inclusiveness in our schools?
So, I believe strongly in diversity in our schools, so strongly that I put my children in a far more diverse school than their districted school when I chose to put them in Frederick Classical Charter School. And what I would say after my experience in the charter schools, which our charters are some of the most diverse schools that we have in our county. And what I would say after that experience is that when you let families choose the avenue that's right for them, they will actually naturally choose a diverse path and choose diverse schools. And so, I would expand our options for attending our charter schools and expand our charter schools so that our families can move around, leave their districted homes, and attend schools that are diverse and lovely and happy places. Thank you.
So, we have to start with the framework of belonging. And we know we have systemic issues amongst the country and we also have systemic issues within FCPS. What a student learns best when they know that they belong, when they see themselves in the curriculum and pedagogy, and when the students see themselves in the schools they're at. We have schools in this county that have no diversity in the teaching force whatsoever. So, we have to look at those schools and wonder why, why is diversity not going to these schools? We also have to look at the access to not only AP, but also extracurricular activities. The CTE program where minority students are three times less likely to be able to join. There's a lot of things, as an African-American educator, I see this every day. When I walk into what they call an on-level class and it's all diversity students, African-American, Spanish students, and you work in the AP class and it's all of the other Q. We have to look at our curriculum and our pedagogy. How are we teaching students and is it culturally relevant and is it gonna be culturally inclusive? We have to protect our babies and they have to see themselves in school to be prepared.
Anyone else? We can go to the next one. Uh, next question. And I'm picking from the hat. And the winner is, oh, it's you anyway, Jamie. Question number two. And two minutes on the clock for this one. How do you plan to confront the opportunity gap?
Actually, this is a great question to come after the one that we just had, right? We have issues of equity in our county and we have issues of diversity and that is a huge problem with the opportunity gap. I also want to address that our issues with diversity are more than what we can see. There's a lot that goes on with neurodiversity, with disability, and other things that we can't necessarily see, but are just as important fabric to our whole community. And our children need to be able to learn, grow, and be taught like folks who are all parts of this diversity. And that goes to the opportunity gap. We also need to be addressing what are we actually assessing? And how is that assessment affecting all of our different students? And when we're looking, assessments are algorithms, we know this, algorithms are built by people. We're human, we make mistakes and we have human biases. And we need to be able to recognize the biases that we've already baked into the system and do everything we can to take it out of the system. We also need to put those folks who are having those issues with the opportunity gap front and center in the communication and in the conversation. It can't just be folks like myself talking about it. It has to come from the person who's actually dealing with these issues. What are they seeing? What is the problem? We can have a great idea, but it may not be applied, applied in the way that actually works, right? So, we need to be able to talk to the folks who are actually dealing with those applied theories. If it's working, not working, and be able to adapt and change where it's not.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to address the question of how do you plan to confront the opportunity gap? Go ahead.
Opportunity gap is not something that's brand new. I mean, the first thing we have to do is invest in public schools. Since even the nineteen-eighties, there was a divestment of monies that went to specific schools, especially when we look at No Child Left Behind. But we need to build a school system that, one, attracts the best and brightest educational minds in the country. And to do that, we have to have professional level pay. Because if there's not an educator driving that bus in the classroom, you can't close any gap. The second thing we have to do is we have to look at these standardized tests. Every student is not the same. Every student is not standard. We have to not only look at those tests to inform us, but look at informal assessments as well as projects and look at growth. The public school system is so great because it educates everybody, no matter what your race, your sexual orientation, your creed, your background. So, when we're assessing students, we have to look at their assessment as if each student is their own person because they have the chance to be able to reach their dreams. And the last thing I'll say is reduce class sizes. And this is something, oh, and I'm out of time, but reduce class sizes.
Thank you, Chad. Is anyone else want to address the question, Josh?
Good, 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 I mean, Chad. Yes, and you know, two examples of opportunity gap. One, you know, we should make sure that we're also talking about literally what are the enrichment opportunities? You know, when I served a time, for a time in the city council here, I championed a program where the city, for the first time, funded a partnership with the Met Theater Organization to do after-school arts programming at Lincoln Elementary School, soon followed by Oak Press Elementary School. And I saw firsthand how important there's enrichment, that enrichment program was for the students and just as importantly, for the parents and guardians. The other opportunity gap is, one, if you think about transportation. Right now, transportation is a huge barrier. If I have to live in one school in the county and I want to partake in, say, the International Back Alert Program in another part of the county, or the Engineering Program Concentration in another part of the county. If I don't go to that specific high school, my parent or guardian has to transport my, to transport that student to that school every day. That's not an equitable outcome and that's not an equitable opportunity. Again, we're not pointing fingers, but we have to acknowledge it and we have to work on it together.
Anyone else want to address the question?
So, the best thing to fix this gap is to not let it happen in the first place. We do a terrible job in FCPS of identifying children who are falling behind grade level and offering them the support in a timely manner. We actually don't intervene until our students are almost two grade levels behind. And if we wait until fourth grade to start interventions for a child who's been behind since first grade, we've probably already lost them. So, what we need to do is to be invested early and making sure our students are receiving the interventions they need as young as possible, so we don't even get to the point where we have a gap in our, in our students' progress and in their proficiencies. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go on to the third question, notice that someone is walking around with the box. If you do have questions that have popped up in your head, please be sure to get them to her. We'll be collecting them after this question's over. So, question number three, and that will go to Chad Wilson. So, question number three. What do you believe are the top priorities for FCPS, that FCPS should focus on? Two minutes.
Thank you. So, I'm gonna start where I left off, class sizes. Class sizes are at the point right now where they're so large where students cannot get one-on-one attention. Not only that, but then you have educators that are tasked with not only delivering the curriculum, but also going home and grading, being able to have those interventions, as Ms. Brennan said. It's overtaxing the system. Our second thing is we also have, on top of that, schools that are absolutely overfilled. Again, when I'm trying to find myself in a school and I'm crushed inside a school or I'm outside in a portable, then we have safety issues as well. But I want to go back to what really is in my heart and that's special education. Special education students deserve so much more and I believe FCPS has fiduciary responsibility to provide them that. Special education students and their programs are traditionally always underfunded. They have been since, really, the beginning of special education. And so, I think that in Frederick County, we need to look at our special education programs and see what we are offering these kids with supports and ensuring that they have all the supports that they need to be successful. And the last thing I'm gonna say that I believe is a priority for Frederick County is looking at how we treat our professionals. How do we treat our educators? How do we treat everybody from the school secretary that greets the person when they first walk into the school, the bus driver that drops the kids off, the students, professionals that clean up the school, and to the educators that are sitting in the classrooms and counseling service that are with our children every single day? I heard a quote one time and it sticks with me all the time, that educators have the most influence over students because they see them every day. They're the ones that teach them how to read and write, they're the ones that bring joy to education. I like to say fun and the fundamentals of education. So, we need to really look at how we are treating the educators within our program and that is reflection of how our society is. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to address the question of what they believe are the top priorities for FCPS, that our FCPS schools should focus on?
Okay, so, could you back it up with one another, right? Here we go. So, part of, we have, we want to do all these things. We want to make sure that special education is fully funded. We need to attract and retain teachers. We need to have more schools, right? We all know this, we know that Oakdale Elementary School is, or the enrollment size is larger than we needed for our high schools. This is not a great learning environment for our kids. It's not a great work environment for our teachers. When our teachers have a poor work environment, guess what? Our kids are not gonna have a great learning environment. There's only so much a human being can do. Funding is definitely one of the big top priorities of just making sure, advocating, whether it's county and state, finding other avenues for funding to help fill in some of the gaps. So, it's not gonna be one year and we fix it. It's gonna take time, it's gonna take rebuilding, it's gonna take community input. Which is the other big thing is that we really need the community involved. We need parents involved, knowing what is going on, what the meetings are, being able to participate in all of that. That communication, meeting parents where they're at. They're not always gonna be using a website or a phone, they may not have a computer at home. Those may not be the areas where they're at, but we can go to schools. The listening sessions that were so good, thank you so much, I see the red card.
We need to work on our academic proficiencies. Our children, we are roughly fifty percent, depending on the grade and the subject tested, proficient, grade level proficient. That's abysmal. So, one of the ways we need to attack that is by making sure that we have scientifically-based curriculum in our classroom. So, we're using quality programs like phonics-based reading programs, that we are using tried and true math programs, that we are not chasing the latest educational fad anymore, which we have had a history of doing. And that will help our students across the board, all spectrums of our students who need our support to implement really excellent, excellent curriculum. And that's something we have not done here in FCPS.
First and foremost, that we need to ensure that every student is safe at the schools, right? That they're free from bullying and harassment. And as I go door-to-door, that comes up. And we need to ensure that, that we set standards where that's not acceptable for any student. The second, which some of the panelists have talked, other candidates here have talked about already, right? That in terms of expecting, expecting success from every student. And the ingredients of that, right, are ensuring high-quality teachers that are hired and retained, that the teaching staff reflects the community in which they are, that they are teaching, that we have class sizes that are not overpowered. You know, we have school construction funding crisis currently. You know, I've testified in Annapolis, I've testified along with Board President Karen Yovo in Annapolis about these issues on bills that could try to relieve this. You know, we've got a school investment crisis in terms of how do we ensure that we have enough counselors and behavioral specialists and all the support staff that we need. You know, and it's, it's not, oh, I've got the red card. It's the first time I've got the red card. So, plus, it's actually, it's not, it's warm.
Watch the, watch the speed traps, Josh. Okay, now, we're gonna go to the, that's one of us. We're gonna go ahead and go to the questions generated from the audience at this time. Remember, this is a forty-minute section, if possible, and if they run out, then we'll go back to the questions that were moderator-generated. So, the first question from the crowd, and I actually have several questions, so I'm gonna mix theirs in with other people's. How do we address the technology gaps and push more opportunities to engage with the new and emerging technology? Whoever wants to take that, go, and remember you have one minute on these.
Well, I'll go. You know, I've spent the last seventeen years in the technology industry and now, the last two years, I formed a nonprofit to help bridge the, it focuses solely on bridging digital divide, how do we bring internet access to homes that don't have it? I'm currently working on that now. I'm proud to have worked with the United Way and the Frederick County Government under the leadership of County Executive Fitzwater. They received a state grant to distribute five thousand laptops for families in need. These issues of technology gap were exposed during COVID. These were issues that were not new, it's just suddenly everyone was aware of them. The families that had the issues in terms of not having technology at home, they were fully aware, right? But as a community and society, we suddenly were aware. And it's challenging, right, because there's a capital cost that's involved and it's very difficult. You know, Mr. Baughan has been, spent a career in technology himself and is very familiar with that. In addition to having purposely served on the board himself and is aware that technology challenges both within the school systems, that there's the technology in the classroom, but also at home.
Anyone else want to address the question or need me to repeat it? Okay, we're gonna go to the next one, question real quick. Per the Maryland Blueprint, huge members of black and brown students are reading below grade level. The blueprint goals are a mere three percent improvement per year. This will leave too many students behind. What actions can you take to speed up the elimination of these inequities?
You read the one.
Yeah, I can read it one more time. It's a long one. Well, thanks a lot. Alright. Huge members of black and brown students are reading below grade level. The blueprint goals are a mere three percent improvement per year. This will leave too many students behind. What actions can you take to speed up elimination, to speed up the elimination of these inequities? Go ahead.
That's a great question and I'm glad whoever submitted it noticed that as well. That's accurate, right? So, if you happen to have a fifteen, twenty-point gap in terms of where your achievement is, one, it's important to be focusing on, on having a percentage increase every year, but you may not actually fully close it. And by the time you get to that, that's like ten, fifteen years later. I think overlaying that, the blueprint is, they're mandatory requirements of the blueprints. It's extremely complex, we all know it. I'm still learning a lot about it myself, so I can't even say that I'm being authority on it. But what I think we have to do is locally, ensure, ensure that we have clear targets of saying, of being very bold and saying that we are going, this is the gap, this is how we're going to close it, this is where we're going to close it by. And that sounds to me kind of naive, but it's not. Because I think that if you don't, if you don't go and lean in all the way to say, look, we're gonna eliminate the achievement gap and this is by when we're going to do it and we're gonna be very public about how we do it, right? When you go on the FCPS website, we want to see, this is where we are, this is the progress we're making school by school.
So, this goes back to what I was talking about before. We allow this gap to happen when, in our first and second grade classrooms. So, part of it is because we use a terrible reading curriculum, which is why we used a completely different reading curriculum at the charter school. But we need to make changes in our curriculum. We need to make sure that our students who need specialized reading help, like the Orton-Gillingham program, that they get access to those programs. We withhold the ability for students who are struggling to get access to alternative programs that would help them. And we need to be intentional about starting this younger and also involving the parents. Because I know as a parent myself, there's been times where my kids have been struggling at school, and I haven't been made aware of it. And so I think there's a lot of parents that would do a lot more and be a lot more involved, and we need to increase that communication. I think we need to be really intentional with our parents and say, your child is X far behind, so that they know how to step in and help their kids.
One of the things I want to address is the reality that's happening in classrooms, right? So, you know, in terms of the reading and phonics, the number of words we're designed into law that we will be doing, you know, phonics education, uh, reading and writing in our schools. So that is something that all the teachers are bringing into the classroom, starting this year, this is in Frederick County. So that's being, that is something that's going to be handled and needs to be communicated with parents. Parents also can be taught a little bit of that phonics, right? Because there's different, there's many different methods to that in terms of helping their children. But when we're also in a classroom, in our public school education classroom, you also have a very diverse body of students, right? So some of your, if, uh, five or four students or your I P students, students with special education or in your program, learning plans, um, students with behavioral issues and mental health issues are all in that classroom together. And so you have some wildly differing sort of learning styles. And now you have 30 of them rammed into a first or second grade classroom and one teacher. Because we don't have enough money to pay to have enough teachers in the classroom, enough help, enough aides, enough reading specialists. Thank you so much.
I wish I could buy more than a minute because I need more minutes to explain this. But one, the first thing I would say, and I've taught most in reading, I've taught read wanting to, and I want to say that you have to align home practices with educational objectives. But I also, you know, as an educator, I take offense to the fact that we're always saying black children can't read or, or behind. I'll tell you just one thing about standardized tests. Standardized tests are made to sort, and they do a lot of harm to a lot of different, uh, because even myself, uh, who have a master's degree, uh, when I walked up and they say, oh, he's not going to do as well on this. It's an assumption. We have to make sure that we are unlocking the potential of our educators to be able to teach the students because they are close to the students and they know exactly what our students need. They know what little Bobby needs and James and Chad Jr., what they need to read. So we need to look at the curriculum apart. We also have to look at, what are they reading? Do these students see themselves in reading? Do they see themselves in math? Do they see themselves in social study? Because you're more likely to be invested in something that you see yourself in. You're more likely to get something back when you feel that it's been put inside you and you've been put inside it.
Thank you. Uh, next question. How can we expand C T E?
Do you want to start or?
Next, the next question or?
Um, my, my son is actually in the C T E program, um, and I could not be more proud or more excited for all of the, the things that he's done in that program. Excellent, absolutely excellent. And one of the things that we need to do is obviously expand the facility. Um, and we have actually community partners, business owners, who would love to help partner with us to expand our facilities, but we haven't done an adequate job of reaching out. We also have Frederick Community College, which is right there, which also has some shop space, some additional space. And we are not adequately working with them to shift some students, to find some alternative spaces. We have some of our C T E students too, who their education can be in like a regular classroom. And we could lease additional space. We have our charter schools in what's essentially office parks. We could add space in those areas to expand our C T E and maybe break it up between, um, the kids who need shop space versus kids who need classroom space. We have a lot of alternatives, but we absolutely have got to invest in expanding that program. It is fantastic. It is a crown jewel of our county.
C T C is a great program. About 1,800 students who applied, 900 were actually able to get into it. And even after that, after they've done shadow, they applied and they've gotten in, they may have found that program they thought was going to be great wasn't that so great for them. But once they leave, that seat is wide open and no one else can come and fill it. Uh, this was a question that I took to some of the career specialists over at Walkersville High School when I was there to do some interview training with the students there. And, you know, there are other programs too, not just C T C, but there are C T E programs in other schools. There's a blacksmith program at Brunswick, right? We have automotive programs in other places. The spaces that are needed for an automotive program or a blacksmith or welding program are very specialized spaces. So we need to have our folks who are in C T E, C T C part of the school planning design, so we can make sure that we're putting that at the forefront of what we're planning in our design of our new schools, for one. And then we also, that will expand those options. And I keep to find out that if you were denied entry to C T C, you may not have been aware of the C T E options available. So we just need to make that an automatic sort of thing, so they can see if there's a C T option available.
Time, sorry. Next time you get three seconds off.
I love what Jenny just said. It's phenomenal. Uh, but we also have to look at the policies. We have to look at the gatekeeping of this. It's not just space, but we have to reimagine what education looks like. It shouldn't just be I go to a different building, someplace that most of our parents can't get through students to. But we have to reimagine what it looks like inside, uh, inside schools. And we have to be able to pre-plan for schools to be able to be built out, added onto, and reimagine, put, to put that right down the hallway instead of hopping in a car and going in a half hour where are they going? But I'll say this again, minority students are three times less likely to enter these programs. And these programs are life-changing. These programs are economically life-changing, family life-changing, generational wealth life-changing. So we have to do a better job of communicating that to all stakeholders, and not just the black community, but the Latino and Latina X community. We have to be able to give to the Asian American community. And we have to say that we have all these opportunities in our schools. This is how your student can do it. Whether it's a check-down list of how they can do it, we have to ensure that they are all invested and they are all able to be included.
Time. Sorry for you as well, Chad.
For sure, if we were going by that standard, we'd be like, I'm done. Uh, I, I completely agree, uh, with, with Jenny and Chad. Uh, you know, there, we, we have to find a way, and, and, you know, I know the current board members are, are strong advocates of expansion of C T C and C T E programming. It comes down in part to, it, it is part, it's funding. Uh, it's also though, as, as was mentioned earlier, it's also looking at how do we create new partnerships? How do we bring in the business community, the Chamber of Commerce, right? This, and how do we bring all these different partners together to, to, to expand the programming? Uh, and to reimagine, uh, how we bring the programming to more schools and to the students and families, right? Maybe not everything stays or resides at the, at the, where the campus is now, or the F C C campus. Maybe we need to bring that more into the communities, uh, beyond what it is now today. Uh, and I completely agree about this, and this is a larger issue, right? This is the, how do we make sure that families are aware about these programs? And it's not just C T C. And this is conversations that we need to be having as soon as they get into middle school.
Next question. Uh, do you think that the results of the college and career readiness test should be published each year so that parents and the school board knows how their children are doing? Given that only 31.8% of 11th and 12th graders passed math and English in 2023? Want me to repeat it?
I, I actually want to ask a question through a wrote-up question. Okay. What measurement did they use to say that only 31% of the students passed math and English?
I don't have that information, so.
Because I'm going to answer it this way, uh, there's no final, so I don't know if they're getting that statistics from a final test that doesn't exist. But I would say that Frederick County, looking at the statistics of E L A and math, is in the top three of the largest counties in Maryland, and, and how they do. Standardized tests, people have this assumption that that's a end-all, be-all. A standardized test gives you a snapshot at that moment of what the student might remember. And it's usually written in a grade level above the student so that the data can be used for the next year. So I'm confused as an educator, because when I look at a standardized test, I want to see, did my student make growth? When we say 31%, looking at the statistics of E L A, African-American students in Frederick County did much better than Howard County, Montgomery County, Prince George's County. And so we should be applauding the educators and the students that we have in this county. And I also want to say that when I walk around doors, I see a lot of graduates in Frederick County. For a county that only has 31% proficiency, which means that seven out of 10 students can't read and do math, they're doing darn well in the business world, in the legal world, and in, uh, life. So that's just mine.
Thank you, Chad.
Do you think what, what gets measured?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. I don't mean to be, excuse me. Thank you. Does anyone else want to answer the question? Go ahead, Jenny.
So I do think that we need to make sure that those, um, test results are made public and transparent. We can't fix what we don't know. And as I talk to parents across this county, um, they are surprised with some of the problems that we have in our school. They're surprised with some of the proficiency rates. They're surprised with some of the, um, the literacy rates. And it's concerning for them, but it's stuff that they didn't know because we don't, we, we only have to broadcast the good stuff. And we've got to get to the point where we broadcast all of the problems, warts and all, so that the public knows and we can help actually start addressing some of these things. Nothing should ever be kept secret, you know, from the public. And if we have results that indicate we're doing poorly, we need to have that out there and the public needs to know. And that way they can hold the elected officials accountable for it.
Anyone else? Next question. How can we give students more control and/or choice in our school system? Specifically those who are not triggered by any current programs?
So I'm a huge advocate of school choice in general. Um, and, uh, not in, in, yes, in the larger school choice movement, but across the board with the offerings that we have here. Our kids deserve excellent education, and they deserve an education that aligns with their own learning styles. And that's why I fully support expanding our charters, creating new charters, maybe authorizing additional seats per class, our additional classes per grade at our existing charters, helping our charters expand, helping our security technology center expand. And then, you know, like we, we recently ended, um, the elementary portion of the remote virtual program. And that was a program many students in this county relied upon and needed, um, and really helped support their learning objectives. So if we want to start to give kids, and they should, uh, more opportunity to weigh in on the kind of education they need, then we need, also need to make sure that we are giving them options and that our options have space. All of our charters right now have wait lists. Um, and so if we continue to move forward and give our kids choices, I think that would be great. Thank you.
I can get my time to talk a lot.
Anyone else on this question? Yep, go ahead.
Um, so I'm a pro-public school educator. I'm always going to be pro-public school. Our public school education system is nominal. Uh, we do have a lot of offerings, but again, I look at the policies. What is being gate-kept from our students? But our students also have to, um, when they go to school, know that they're in a welcoming and affirming environment and that their choices matter. Um, students are bringing, we always say bring joy to education, competency, belonging, validation of who they are. All these things are very important. But we also need to actually look at what our programs are, we are offering to our students. We have great partnerships with a lot of communities. Uh, one of my coworkers, Donna, is right now has an internship with a law firm. But we do need to look at curriculum and what it is actually providing to our students, and we can expand it. Um, so I, I think that's my answer.
Yep.
So one of the things I said about the school choice program and with charters, one of the things that they don't have the resources to bring in are our special education kids. To a certain degree, sure, but we have other children who have more special education needs and need more help while they're in the school. So if we are going to look at it as we're just going to branch everybody off, eventually that public school system is just a special education system, right? Now we are in a situation like Arizona and other states across the country that have busted their budget, um, at the end of the day. So yes, we do need to, more school choice. The LANS program is amazing because that is one of those apprenticeship programs, and it needs more people involved in that, more businesses and organizations. We're going to have about a 90% retention rate when kids graduate from that program and they go to work. And that includes an auto shop, right? We're not just talking a law firm, there's also auto shop and other opportunities. As, uh, when I was a veterinary technician, we took in lots of students, and that helped just sort of, you know, helped them feel great about wanting to be veterinarian, kept them motivated, and then they went off and became veterinarians and came back. So this is why I offer our students.
I, I, I think one of the things, I don't, I guess I'll come back to, to what I mentioned earlier, is that I, I think we have to help unlock some of the excellent opportunities that exist within F C P S already. I, you know, I think F C P S is a very good school system. I, I, I said at the beginning of my remarks, I, I think, you know, my son Spencer is receiving an excellent education. Um, and, and the key, I believe, is that we need to ensure that every student in F C P S receives an excellent education, including excellence in, in opportunities that exist. And I think that's one of the challenges, right? So we've talked about, you know, literally there's a physical barrier of being able to get kids who may want to participate in one program of excellence in another school because they don't simply attend that. Now, that's a physical barrier. There are other barriers in terms of, of, right, just knowing what those opportunities are. And the other piece of that is ensuring that we strengthen our partnerships with the F C P S. I, I look at Brooke Santos back there with Bluff for Lottland, incredible partnership, right? That, that is, that, you know, we want to be able to push into F C P S even more about, so that families are aware of, of, um, flu vaccination shots and other health and wellness measures. And there's countless other partnerships that we can talk about too.
Next question. Do you support diversity, equity, and inclusion training in our schools?
Yes, 100%. I, I, I've worked, I had an opportunity to work for a very large organization, um, a global organization. Uh, they engaged and took very seriously, uh, diversity, equity, inclusion training. Um, I saw firsthand the benefits. It went done correctly, by the way. Uh, went done correctly. That's, that's very tricky. That's, that's difficult because you have to be committed. You have to have leadership that's committed to that. You have to have then the buy-in that goes in from there. And, and it's important because we want to help ensure that, 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 that we understand, one, all respect is, and also at the same time, what everyone's bringing to the table. And by doing that and ensuring that there is an equitable voice, that with this, that these voices are heard within our organization, our organization is strengthened as a result. We become stronger as an organization. So yes, I do.
I can't clap?
Yes, you can clap. I'm, I'm sorry, but come on, come on, we're up to everybody. That's right.
30 seconds, right?
I mean, after something like that, 25, and how about that? Go ahead.
Okay, so yes, diversity, equity, and inclusion in our classrooms. This is a bit about what we've been talking about all night in actuality, right? And these different programs and access to programs and for everybody, all kinds of diversity, not just the diversity we can see, but the diversities that we can't see as well. And that includes having a diverse staff, having diverse students, having everybody coming into the classroom and working together. Um, so we need to have diversity, equity, inclusion, because that's actually going to help our academic success. It's going to help our children to succeed. Who are they going to go and work with when they graduate, right? They're going to work with people that don't look like them, that don't pray like them, that may use pronouns. They're going to use all of that. They need to at least, at the very least, know how to be respectful toward another, right? How to work with one another. They don't have to agree on everything. That's the point. They do need respect and they do need cooperation. Thank you.
Yes, 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 and yes. Uh, I mean, the world we live in today is diverse, and we all want the next generation to do better we did, so we need things to be equitable. And it's important to have inclusion, um, from the, whether it's special education, whether it's on-level, whether it's A P, whether it's athletics. We want diversity because in the real world, it's diverse. It is not one person or one thought or one idea or one creed. And we want to live together in, in this world, and public schools being the, the really engine of, of democracy. We need to be able to have discourse. We need to be able to agree on facts. We need to be able to ensure that everybody is represented. That someone like me, who didn't have a teacher that looked like him until my last class of my master program, think about the effect it would have had on me to have somebody look like me standing in front of me. To just say to little Chad, look, man, you could do it too, all right? We need that. And we need inclusiveness in thought. We need inclusiveness in who's in. We need to protect 443. We need the, uh...
I think this is a very challenging issue because, um, as Chad said, frequently it's not done well. Um, so our schools are diverse places. And our communities are fantastic, and Frederick County is a diverse community. And I love the idea that we are together, that we spend time together in our classrooms, and that I do believe that our kids grow up with a really great sense of other people and other communities and other ethnicities, and I think that's fantastic. As I said before, that's part of why I specifically put kids in the charter school that we did, because I wanted to find a far more diverse environment for them than what would have been our districted school. So I think our kids are getting that naturally by being together, and I think that that's wonderful.
Okay, I'm going to go on to the next question. How can we ensure that home schooled students participate in programs at their home school? Do you want me to repeat it or does nobody else take the question?
No, I mean, we're students. I'm a football coach. I also coach track. I have home schooled students for all my football team because we reach out to every student that's in our community. We want that community school idea and we want that buy-in. But, you know, let's be fair in taking the question, right? Home schooled students are a part of the community. We have to ensure that we are accurately in funding not only, but our students that are actually inside the school, but that we are communicating and building partnerships with the parents that decide to homeschool their children. I think the curriculum should match. I think that we need to really look at that. And I know that this question is trying to do, but again, I look at community schools. I look at acceptance and I look at inclusion. So hopefully we can, we can have a society that does that. But I am a public school advocate, just to throw that back. And I think I have 20 seconds. I think Frederick County is doing good. I didn't say that, so it's why everybody didn't know.
Anyone else on the question?
I have friends who live in another state whose children are able to participate in athletics, high school level athletics as home schooled students. And I think it's been a really positive experience for them. So I would really like to make sure that we do have those options, not that they're, you know, they have to try out like all the other kids and all that kind of stuff. But that if they would like to participate, they are community members, they are taxpayers. And so I think that it'd be fantastic if those kids were able to participate in our extra curriculum programs.
You know, for some students, the home schooling option for a variety of different reasons makes a lot of sense. Two of our kids were, during COVID, were homeschooled. And because it made sense for them, you know, you meet students where they are. What we found though, is that there's not a lot of guidance though, at times, for parents or guardians who, you know, feel that that is the best option for their kid. And I think, I think we need to do a deeper dive about that so that we help ensure that the opportunities for kids who are being homeschooled are there and that the opportunities for them to be part of the larger community are there. Because home schooled students are still students of part of the public school system. And we need to help ensure, just as we've talked about all evening, that there are equitable opportunities across the board.
Anyone else? Okay, before I go on, I'm going to say this. I'd like to thank the audience for all the questions that they have. This is going to be the last audience question that I'm going to ask, but I know that there are probably more that are in the bank. And I'm going to switch it up a little bit. After this question is over, everyone will get three minutes to do their closing argument. And then we're going to have it where people can come up and ask whatever questions they want, of course, after their program is off the microphone. So if everybody's cool with that, can I get a yeah? Didn't sound like it. Okay, then, let's keep going. All right. What are your plans or proposals to work with local and state leaders to advocate for fully funding FCPS budgets?
Advocate, advocate, advocate and advocate some more. You know, if you're running to serve on the Board of Education, you'd better be a damn good advocate for our public schools and the needs and the funding. That is part of the role. It's not the entire role, but it's part of the role. And so when President of the Board, Karen Yoho, is being a strong advocate to our county and to our state, testifying down in the state about what the needs are in Frederick County, which is, we are the largest and fastest growing county in the state, by the way. But, but we do not receive the funding that we need to compensate for that, right? We're trying to compensate for issues of growth that have been baked in for the last 10 years. So as a board member, I'm going to work hand in hand with our other board members, regardless of perspectives, to advocate with the county, to the county, right? And to the state. We have to do a better job of getting rid of these silos, right? And working together with the community. Our community, we expect that out of our elected officials. We expect that. And I'm going to, I'm going to run with that and run with it with others here. Thank you, Josh.
I think one of the most important things we've got to advocate for is a changing to the school construction capital improvement methodology. Because that's what's really impacted our problems with our overcrowding here in Frederick County public schools. We've known that many of our schools are going to be over capacity practically the day that they're opened. And they do that because we're not really allowed to build into the formula room to grow. We can't build a three-story building and only use two stories of it and say, "Okay, eventually we're going to take that third story over." We're not allowed to do that. So I think that we need to make those changes. But we also, to be effective advocates, need to prove that we're doing our part. So if we're going to also ask for more money and more resources, we have to indicate how we have been good stewards of our money. And then also identify the specific and particular needs that we need addressed. It is very hard to get funding when you just say, "Hey, we just need all this extra money." But if you say, "We have 20% more special needs students than we previously had," those are the kinds of things that help move the needle, getting additional funding.
So I would say the original question was about how to work with stakeholders, right? County and state as well, okay? So there's a double edged sword here. So now you've got to work with the county stakeholders as a board of education. You're an advocate, right? You're a liaison, you're in between the parents, the families, the schools, and the government legislators and officials, right? So now we have to connect the two. Somebody that's on the board, if I walk into, if I'm on the board and I walk into somebody's senator's office, a delegate's office, they know what to expect from me. But what they need to hear are the stories of our families, of our parents, of our students. And that is what we are holding space for. We are holding space for our students to tell their story, for our families to tell about their experiences and taking that to those folks, the legislators, the delegates, and senators, who helped to create that law and make that legislation. That's what they need to hear. They need to hear their heart. They need to hear our heart. You know, our desire to want our kids to have the most opportunity they can have. Every family wants to do that for their kids, right? Have a better world after them, right? So that's one of the things, I think, in terms of working with our state and county, is to actually give them the truth of what's happening, from the parents and teachers.
100% agree with you, Janie. You have to be an activist though. I mean, you have to activate yourself and be able to activate your community, to be able to go up and testify and answer Frederick County's needs. As the fastest growing county, growing county in the state, we need funding. That's what it is. And I love the fact that Janie said, "Bring parents, bring students." Everybody listens to a student no matter where they talk to. When you bring student leaders and say, "My school looks like this. My classroom, I have 35 people in it. I can't do this." They will listen. Nothing unites people like parents who want their children to have a good education. And so if I'm on the board, I'm going to be there. And I'm going to be knocking on doors and I'm going to be bothering senators and I'm going to work with the county council like our Board of Education does. And I'm going to look for the funding because to me, it's an investment. It's not a business model where you might get something back, but it's an investment in the dream of a student. And as a teacher, that's what we do. We are servants, right? So we have to go ask for what our students need and our community needs.
All right, so we've reached the crescendo of this event in terms of panelists having the stages all to themselves. So we're going to have it where you guys have three minutes and I'm going to pick out a bat one more time. Yes, the hat again. And then after that, it'll be mics off and everyone can talk for you, okay? The first one, give their closing argument will be Janie on here. I hope I said that right.
Somebody, yeah, somebody said that to me. I think you remember it as yay for my guy, so.
The yellow pad will go up at a minute 30 and we'll put three minutes on the clock. Closing argument.
So you heard a little bit about that I'm a parent, PTA president, a registered nurse. You know, I have been a Maryland resident all my life. I have a family that is very, that is diverse in terms of disabilities. You know, my father unfortunately passed away a couple of years ago. He had polio. You don't really care much about polio these days, right? How important vaccines are. It's nice. But the effects of that caused a lot of problems for him. But his parents raised him and said, "Look, we're not going to be here anymore. So we're going to enrich your environment with as many things to stretch your mind, you know, get that imagination going." Whether it was cars, guitars, radios, everything. They worked so many more jobs just to help their kid. And he became an electrical engineer, built a small firm in Attenborough County. He's an amazing man. My mom is deaf because they couldn't afford surgeries for her years, right? So I come from a family that's, you know, farmers poor, didn't have anything. They couldn't send her to a school for the deaf because they didn't have the money for it. You know, here in Frederick County, if we have a family whose student is deaf, our FCPS will find a placement, they'll find help for them, right? Resources. That wasn't the case when she was in school. And she was female. So basically they took her out at 10th grade and she picked cotton, corn, and tobacco until she was married. That's what she did. So, you know, I know that I look one way when people see me. My family history is different. I care very deeply about our families. I care very deeply about people my children grow up with and their parents. You know, and it's how I feel about our schools as well. The teachers are amazing. They really want our children to succeed. They become another trusted individual in our child's life, just like trusted granny, trusted auntie, a trusted neighbor. And that is sacred service right there, to be able to do this for our students, for our teachers, for our schools and for our community. And that's where my heart is. That's why I want to put students first and families first, to make sure that it's your voices that are heard. Because it's not mine that's the most important at all. It's yours. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person to give their closing argument will be Chad Wilson.
So, now some time back to Janie, Janie. My grandfather was a steelworker. My grandma grew up with an eighth grade education from Birmingham, Alabama. My grandfather fought tooth and nail to get into the Steel Workers Union because it was segregated and he wasn't allowed. Through those two and their hard work, my mother went to college. My aunt became a doctor, superintendent, assistant superintendent for public schools. My uncle went to the military. Out of those, it triples down to me where I'm an educator. My cousin's an educator. My other cousin's a lawyer. And so education is deep for me. I became an educator because I believe in servant leadership. And I believe that I have a higher calling than just myself, but I believe I have a higher calling to ensure that every student has an excellent education. I believe that Frederick County, where my wife and I decided to move to and have two children at, has an excellent education system. Like all education systems, we can always have it. I believe that Frederick County has the opportunity to have the best special education programs in the United States. I believe that Frederick County has the opportunity to have the best CTE and CTC programs in the United States. I believe that every educator in Frederick County that wakes up every morning with the thought in their mind that I have to do this to ensure that my students can reach their dreams and go to sleep 12, sometimes 16, 18 hours later of how can I make my lesson better tomorrow, deserve a champion on the Board of Education and assure that they have professional respect, that they have world-class compensation, and that every day they are celebrated. I believe that Frederick County and the communities that we serve have the opportunity to come together and to be joyous in our education system, to bring fun back to the fundamentals of education. That we have the ability to ensure that our curriculum is culturally relevant and that every student can see themselves in a school when they walk through the building, that they are welcome and affirmed, that they are safe, that they are validated. I'm running for Frederick County Board of Education not because I want the headache of everybody emailing me every day and yelling at me, but because like each one of you, I'm a parent. I happen to also be a teacher. I'm a coach. I make thousands of decisions every day that can affect how my students move forward, how my athletes move forward. I'm built for this. And I'm ready to be that person on the board that is going to look at the curriculum from the mindset of someone who has studied curriculum. That's going to look at policy from somebody who's been an advocate for LGBTQ plus students, black young men and women, and the community that, you know, I have taught at in McGurkberry Village, Maryland. But I'm a Frederick person. I live in Ballinger Creek.
Time, Chad.
Sorry. Can I borrow three minutes from you, Josh?
You have my time.
Josh is over the floor. Next one, let's see. Who will be next to give the closing statement? Oh wow, we're just kind of going around. Janie. Three minutes on the clock, sir.
So I'm running for Frederick County Board of Education because I do also believe that children deserve excellence in education. Every child in our county deserves to go to school and learn in a way that suits their own learning styles and that meets their needs. I believe that our county currently does not do that. It has not been meeting that goal and it hasn't been meeting it for a long time. We've known things that need to be changed and we haven't changed them. And year after year, we talked about it and year after year, nothing changes. The role of the Board of Education is to help manage not only what happens, you know, in our schools, but the bigger picture of our budget, of our long-term plans. And we have failed in those responses too. That's part of why our schools open almost overcrowded. The path forward needs to be changed. When I was on the Board of Trustees of Frederick Castle Charter School, we did all of the things for the charter school that a Board of Education member for FCPS would do. We had to make choices on curriculum. We had to make choices on filling roles with compensation. We had to worry about paying the bills. We had to worry about rent. We had to find facilities. We had to expand our facilities. These are all important decisions that are made from a diverse back, people with diverse backgrounds in business, in other studies, other disciplines, not just education, because we rely on administration for our education, for the knowledge and their experience in that way as well. I'm the only person who's currently running, who has experience running an FCPS school, who has experience helping day to day deal with the problems and challenges of schools, who dealt with problems with, from students and their families and helped mediate those problems and who helped push a school forward to become one of the best charter schools in the state of Maryland. I think that I have what it takes. I have a business background, which will help tremendously in our budget. And I have experience running a school. And I think I have what it takes to help move FCPS forward. We can't keep doing the same things and expecting different results. And that's what we're currently doing. I think really this time, hopefully we can make a change. Thank you.
Josh, you have the two minutes and 50, is it 55 seconds?
You have a time, right?
I'm just, I'm just trying to get through this.
No, it's good.
No, you got three minutes, go.
Great. Well, first, thank you. Thank you for hosting this forum and thank you for everyone attending. I have to say, I actually really enjoyed this forum because I really felt like we had an opportunity to talk about issues more so in-depth and it's hard to do in general with these forums. We don't have a lot of opportunities to do this. I said at the opening, you know, my opening remarks, right? That education, we all know this, right? Education is the great equalizer, right? And it's, it's not just because education offers hope. It's not about that. It's not about hope. Education unlocks opportunities. Education creates unfathomable and unimaginable possibilities in an individual. You could almost say, right, education in itself instills sort of its own freedom for an individual to go pursue their lifetime pursuits. It's still fundamentally America. But, but when education, if not outright denied, is not equally implemented or is not equitable in its outcomes or opportunities, right? That's not a travesty. It's not a travesty. Because if I use the word travesty, that lets us sort of all off the hook. It's an injustice, right? And it's okay to say that. It's okay to say that. Because the follow-on from that, right, is that as a community, we have to embrace our arms together and we have to lean into it. And as elected officials, I hope to be an elected official again, but as elected officials have to lean into it and lead on it to say that every student that goes into the doors of that school building is going to get a great education. They're going to be inspired and they're going to go do amazing things. Things that maybe me in this room won't even know, right? We can't even think of. And if we do that for every student, make that commitment, then you know what? The whole community gets lifted up. But we know that already. Everyone in here knows that already. You wouldn't be here otherwise. And so I think that's what in part makes this election very consequential. We know it's consequential. I mean, there's, there's an important speech getting ready to come on on tonight. I mean, there's, there's, there's an important speech getting ready to come on on tonight. So, and I want to go see it, okay? I want to go see it. But that's not the only consequential election on this ballot. This election's consequential at the local level, okay? There's three of us up here that have different, different backgrounds. I don't live in Chad's shoes. I don't live in Janie's shoes. Chad is an educator. Janie is a nurse. And I'm a technology person. And I've done some government affairs work on the side. And I can take an hour to try to explain that later. Okay? But what we all have is a common sense of purpose that we believe that if we apply ourselves, I get very passionate about this. If we apply ourselves and we work together and we work with the existing members of the board, that we can do anything, that we should aim for anything. We deserve that. Our kids deserve that. We deserve to be the best. There's no reason we can't go for that. But there's one of us here that has spent their time in an organization that, that, that bans books, that advocates to ban books, and that advocates to divide students and to make students feel not themselves, simply because of who they are.
Tom, Josh.
We cannot elect that person. And I hope no of you vote. I'm using my own time.
Tom, Tom. Tom, Josh, damn it. Time, damn it. Time. Okay, uh, now, uh, I want to give a lot of different shout-outs. First shout-out I want to give is to all people in Black Advancement, my brothers and my wife back there. Appreciate you, my sister back there. Thank you so much for all your, uh, your guidance throughout this. Pops, thank you so much for all your guidance out, out there. Um, mom, of course, you know, just for being mom. Out Forty, shout-out to Out Forty. Shout-out to Kiki, to y'all really being a lot of people. They're probably listening to this. I really love them. Anyway, uh, last but definitely not least, thank you to all the panelists for the extra hooes that you jumped through for a guy whose name you probably can't pronounce and don't know from. Yeah. You know, you're all talking about opportunity, seize the moment for yourselves and I hope that, I hope the best for all of you. Um, and with that being said, uh.
And can everyone help put away their chair? Yes.
Hold on a second. Can everyone help put away their chair? Also, there are, I believe there's stuff in the back from everybody's campaign. If it's not, you can feel free to put your stuff back there.
Oh, also, there's a flyer back there for an education, um, it'll, election ed, elec-ther, education? Anyway, they will teach you all about what's going on at the election booth. If you haven't done it, they'll even give you a little practice thing. So it's back there, it's going to be held at the art, if you want to.
Go, go ahead.
I also want to say that Veronica Lowe wishes she could have been here this evening, but she's not coming.
I did not, I didn't, I didn't want to get into anyone's personal business, but she was, she was supposed to be on the panel, but she unfortunately could not make it. Um, and also there's another, another gentleman who's in here who couldn't make it to the panel, unfortunately, but he is here and he did stay and I appreciate you for that, most definitely. Um, now to everybody else, uh, have a good night, have a great weekend, and don't do anything I would do.